All right, we are live. I'm admitting others.
Calling to order the Monday, May 18th, 2020, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Are there any changes or additions or corrections? Seeing, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the rule on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Matt Brunner.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community and determine the future of our community. And we thank you for the technology that even though we're unable to meet in person because of the unforeseen circumstances that we're in right now, that you've allowed us to be in a time where we can still meet and discuss ideas and work together to move forward. So I just pray for this council. I pray for the discussions and the decisions that are made tonight, that you would oversee that and help them to make wise decisions for Berkeley and keep us moving forward. Father, I pray also for the school year that's coming to a close. And it's been such a strange school year. And I just ask that you would bless all the kids who are finishing out their schoolwork from home and praying for the parents as well as they try to help their kids along with the new schedule. And I pray especially for the seniors. I know that this is kind of especially unfortunate for them where they were anticipating the end of their high school career and seeing friends and teachers and peers for the last time at school. But yet that was cut out from under them. And so I pray that you would just watch over them and help them to be able to make the best of the situation. And I thank you for the opportunity they have later this week to have kind of a drive-by celebration for one another and just help them to continue to succeed as they move on from high school and pursue college or their various careers. Just bless them and watch over them. And finally, Father, we pray for those who have been affected by COVID-19. These past few months have been awful in many ways, and that's one of them. And so we just pray that you would comfort them and strengthen them and heal them of this tragedy. And so, Father, as we close out, let us have a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19. Thank you. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please turn to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have now reached the public comments portion of our meeting. Again, we will have two public comments, one at the beginning and one at the end. This is for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in a discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net and call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment and you're in the meeting, in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand. You will be called on. If you would like to call in, please dial in at 1-312-626-6799. Again, that number is 1-312-626-6799. And you will be recognized either by your name or by your phone number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And please remember that with these virtual meetings, you have three minutes to speak. And after that, you will be muted. So please make sure that we stay within that allotted time. While I'm giving everybody an opportunity to dial in who just heard the number, I know that our clerk, Ms. Mitchell, does have some correspondence that she is going to report right now that came to council prior to tonight's meeting. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. I received correspondence, one from Ashley P.O.I.R.I.E.R., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. Second correspondence from Mitchell Brown, B.R.W.N., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. Marja Rogers, R.O.G.E.R.S., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. Brian Burnett, B.U.R.N.E.T.T., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. Regina Wise, W.E.I.S.S., Detroit resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month and in support of non-discrimination policy. Six, Catherine Wade, W.A.D.E., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. Seven, Karen Hughey, H.U.Y.G.H.E., Berkeley resident in support of proclaiming June as Pride Month. And my mistake, Mitchell Brown also wrote in support of the non-discrimination policy. And that's all I have here on there.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Mathis, are you going to handle this part?
Yes. Yes. So for anyone that would like to speak at this moment, if you could please raise your hand if you're in the video. For those of you that are dialing in, if you could press star nine so I get the indication that you are wanting to speak. So that way I can know that your hand is raised. I'm going to go down the list per my, what we've been calling the Brady Bunch. So please wait patiently as I call you guys' names. As a reminder, you have three minutes. Once the three minutes is up, I will mute you. Okay? All right, so first hand I see is for Jess.
Go ahead. That's me.
Yes.
Oh, that was quick. Okay, I was trying to do the virtual hand raise. Sorry.
All good.
Okay, are you ready? Good evening. My name is Jessica. Thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council and the mayor on behalf of the Berkeley LGBTQIA community. I've lived in the city of Berkeley for 16 years in the same house on Griffith. I'm a wife and the mother of a beautiful six-year-old daughter and I'm a retired law enforcement officer and firefighter. Tonight, I am here to make a brief statement in support of the non-discrimination policy that will be voted on tonight. And I'd like to thank City Councilwoman and friend Natalie Price for her hard work on behalf of the LGBTQIA community in Berkeley. In the past few months, my co-community organizer, Sarah Schuster, and I have come together via a short Facebook post in a local Facebook page, Berkeley Facebook page. And it stated, is there any interest in a pride picnic? In less than one day, we had over 100 Berkeley residents respond with a resounding yes. What started as an idea to basically grab a sandwich and sit down in the park with fellow LGBTQ family members and friends quickly morphed into something much more than that, than, much more than organizing a casual picnic. With the establishment of our new Facebook group, LGBTQ Berkeley Resource Center, we have been able to bring together our community and our allies. We didn't know at the time that there were so many residents who either identified as LGBTQ, had a child or a friend or a colleague that lived in our city that identified as such. Through a series of events, we began to see the need to organize our community beyond a picnic and simple rainbow flags. Our community we were to find was in dire need of attention to establish laws and ordinances that prevent discrimination and promote equality and inclusiveness for all of the citizens, including the LGBTQ community. Today, I'm happy to see that we are going in the right direction to finally make real change and to bring Berkeley out of the closet. Our needs stretch far beyond this ordinance, however, and it is our goal with this initial ordinance to continue to bring awareness and real change that promotes visibility and acceptance in Berkeley of the LGBTQIA residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. For the next one, all right, I see Michelle Brazu. I'm sorry if I miscorrectly stated your last name. Oh. Unmute you. Oh, let me unmute you real quick. There you go. All right.
Last name is pronounced Brazzo. I don't mean to correct you.
Thank you.
I did write a brief email yesterday to the council members. I live in Berkeley on Rosemont Road. And I wrote the letter and I'm here to show my support for the Pride proclamation and non-discrimination policy. For those of you here that I did not send the email to that are not on the council that are listening, I have a 10-year-old transgender son who transitioned two years ago and also goes to the Berkeley School District. And in the past two years, we have had a lot of support and also met a lot of people that are in the same situation as us as parents, kids that are questioning. And I know it would be a big help to a lot of families to know that they are included and supported like we were. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next Patricia Bonnington?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Patricia Pat Bonnington. My husband and I have lived in Berkeley almost 40 years. We bought our starter house here. We were going to move. We never moved. We were both educators. We were both teachers. And a very fun fact is that our next-door neighbor was Charles Avery, who some of you may or may not know. Charles Avery was a principal in Berkeley and a school was named after him in Berkeley. We stayed in Berkeley because of the good education that we got here. And then we stayed because we had the most wonderful neighbors in the world, young and old. My second son is gay, and he was accepted here. And he thrived here, and he is now a doctor in San Francisco under the education that he got through Berkeley schools. Berkeley needs to do the right thing. I support the Pride proclamation and the non-discrimination policy. And I thank all of you for doing what you do and for having this meeting like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is, so it's a phone number. The last four digits are 6044. I'm going to unmute you so you can speak. There you go.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lisa Turner.
And I'm Scott Turner.
And we are here, we live on Edgewood, and we wanted to support the Pride proclamation and, more importantly, the non-discrimination policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the queue, I see Amanda and Andrew Don. All right, go ahead when you guys are ready.
Hi, my name's Amanda. This is my husband, Andrew. We have been in Berkeley for about two years. We live on West Boulevard. It's been a great experience so far. And we're here tonight to show our support for the June proclamation as well as the non-discrimination policy.
Thank you. All right, next in the queue, I have John Heger. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you are good to go.
Hi, I'm John Heger, and this is my wife.
Nicole.
And we've lived in Berkeley for 12 years. We currently live in Cumberland. I wanted to voice our support for the Pride proclamation and the non-disclosure policy.
Discrimination.
Non-discrimination policy. I wanted to say that my sister is also a first responder and a member of the LGBTQ community. And it means a lot to me to demonstrate that I live in a community that supports her and our family values. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next in the queue, Julie and David Hurst. I'm going to unmute you. Go ahead when you're ready.
Hi there. We live over on Phillips. We've been here since 2005, been in Berkeley since 2005. This is our second home here. And we are also just calling in tonight to support the Pride proclamation and non-discrimination policies. We love that our community proposes, makes these kind of statements. We love the summer offer of inclusivity and protection that it will give our current residents who identify as gay or transgender. And I also love that it makes a statement as a community for any new neighbors who may be looking to live and move into Berkeley as a place where they would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Jane. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. All right, go ahead when you are ready.
Hello, I'm Sarah, and tonight I'm here to make a brief statement in support of the non-discrimination policy and the Pride proclamation for Berkeley. I would like to thank Councilwoman and Natalie Price for her hard work on the ordinance. I've lived in Berkeley for almost three years. I'm a retired elementary school teacher and a mother of two college-age daughters. One is at Grinnell College and the other one is at James Madison College at MSU. And tonight, I would like to, as a mother and also an educator and a teacher, discuss a little bit about our community. As Jess addressed in her statement, our LGBTQ community represents many people in Berkeley. And what started as just a simple post to hang out with LGBTQ turned into something much bigger and important than I would have ever anticipated. When I was planning a big break and I'm chilling for the first time as a full-time single mother for 20 years, my personal plans went in the back burner to address this issue at hand, our Berkeley LGBTQ community. Harvey Milk, a gay activist and politician from San Francisco, urged his fellow LGBTQ to come out of the closet, be visible, and build a strong community in the city that integrates, yet has its own identity. I don't personally consider myself an activist, but I do believe in being out. That is not pretending or hiding one's true self. By being and being out as an individual, it allows us to be the best people that we can be and the best neighbors we can be. As someone who has personally been in and out, I can tell you that being free to be who you are and have acceptance makes a world of difference in how I have carried myself in this world. It has freed me up to be authentic and not live in fear of losing a job or my family not talking to me or my children being bullied. These are real fears that happen every day to LGBTQ people. And we have a human responsibility to make our city safe and welcoming for all, regardless of sexual or gender orientation. When the city government stands side by side with us, protecting us and giving us opportunities to live our authentic selves, we know for certain we are safe and welcomed. Like our neighboring communities, Ferndale, Royal Oak, Hazel Park, Oak Park, and many more communities in southeast Michigan, we now have the opportunity to show, not just say, we are inclusive by actively passing legislation to include and promote equality and visibility of the LGBTQ citizens and community. I personally have started a nonprofit online resource center with Jess as my co-director to start to address our needs. We need education for both LGBTQ identified neighbors as well as our allies. We need safe spaces identified by our businesses as places we are welcome and that want our business and where we want to spend our money. This can be accomplished as is within our reach. Finally, as a-
All right, sorry I had to mute you. Three minutes is up, but thank you. All right, next up on the list, I see Ashley and Stephanie. Excuse me if I say your last name wrong, Poyer. There you go. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ashley Poyer. This is my wife, Steph. We've lived in Berkeley for two years now and love it. We volunteer our time here. We love going out to eat here. I have a small business here in Berkeley. And we just wanted to tune in to say that we support the Pride proclamation and the non-discrimination policy.
Thank you.
All right, next in the queue that I see is Kai Campbell Fox. Go ahead and unmute you.
Yeah, I also called in to say that I wanted to support the Pride proclamation and non-discrimination clause. I have been a part of the Berkeley community since I was born. And I think knowing that there were legal protections for me would have really helped me when I was younger. You know, first coming out as a teenager was kind of like, you know, are things going to be okay? How are things going to go? So I really support this, especially for people who might be just moving to the community and want to know if it's going to be a safe community for them and younger people who might be looking for that kind of assurance that they're going to be safe in their community and feel comfortable in that space. So that's it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the queue? I'm not seeing any. Oh, there you go. All right. Jacob and Jesus, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Jacob Robinson.
And my name is Jesus.
We just moved here about a year ago, and we're very fortunate enough to see a lot of our loving neighbors on the call as well. People who make us want to stay here forever. And we're here as well to show our support for the Pride proclamation and non-discrimination policy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I am not seeing any other hands. I did see a couple of call-ins. So for those of you that called in, as a reminder, if you select star nine, you'll be able to raise your hand. There we go. There's another one. All right, I see Craig. All right, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Jen Alexander, and this is my husband, Craig Alexander, and our daughter. And we were just calling in because we have awesome neighbors and we were calling in support of them. We support the Pride proclamation and non-discrimination policy. It's a mouthful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Deb is joining. Did you see Deb?
Yeah.
Mute them back up. There we go. All right, I am not seeing any other hands raised or anyone else in the queue. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for everybody that took some time out today to attend our meeting and to give us some feedback. It's critically important that not only we hear from our residents and the fact that you're able to join us today in a certainly non-traditional Zoom meeting as opposed to being able to see everybody at City Hall. We certainly appreciate it. And Sarah, I apologize for the three-minute warning catching you there. It's a slippery slope. If we don't enforce that, and I guess it's a little bit draconian, we can lose the rails off of a virtual meeting very quickly. So I appreciate everybody staying within that and trying to stay within it as much as possible. And thank you all for being with us and expressing your points of view this evening on a couple of items that will be on the agenda. And with that, we will now move to our order of business for the evening. And first up is our consent agenda. It is time for the Ms. Mitchell Show. Whenever you are ready, with some water in hand, go ahead.
Here's the first item, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th City Council meeting on Monday, May 4th, 2020. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1350. Three, ordinance number 0820. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, repealing section 138-603 of Article 6, Division 4 of Chapter 138, zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances. Four, ordinance number 0920. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to repeal and replace Article 2 of Chapter 50, Fire Prevention Code of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to adopt the 2015 International Fire Code and prescribe penalties for violations. Five, ordinance number 01020. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 30-186 of Article 5, Division 1 of Chapter 30, businesses to update the citation to the Property Maintenance Code and prescribe a penalty for violations. Six, ordinance number 01120. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 18-63 of Chapter 18, Amusements and Entertainments, to update the citation to the city's adopted building codes and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Seven, ordinance number 01220. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, amending Chapter 26, Building and Building Regulations of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to adopt the State Construction Code as updated and amended, to adopt the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as the city's property maintenance code, to adopt the Michigan Rehabilitation Code as the city's rehabilitation code for existing buildings and to provide penalties for violations. Number eight, proclamation number P1020. Matter of declaring the first Friday in June to be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Number nine, proclamation number P1120. Matter of proclaiming June 2020 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Thank you for that. Normally I don't mute, but since you had such a lengthy volume there, I went unmute you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any corrections or changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the rule on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has been passed and approved. We now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Resolution number R1020. Matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute an agreement with the Berkeley School District to collect and remit the July 2020 property tax levy.
Is there a motion to approve R1020?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. As many of you know, this is an annual item. The city collects on behalf of many other entities, including the school district. We collect on behalf of the state of Michigan, on behalf of Oakland County, and behalf of the Berkeley schools. In total, only about 36 cents of each dollar you pay in taxes to the city actually end up being kept for city purposes. A lot of people are surprised to find that out. And so this is us executing one of those agreements, this with the Berkeley School District. Your packet includes the resolution itself, a letter to the mayor from Mr. Larry Gallagher, a resolution that was adopted by the school boards, facilitating their portion of this, as well as a copy of the agreement itself.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Any discussion on this item? Of course, we do this periodically. It is a normal operating, standard operating procedure. We certainly have a very good relationship with the school district right now. We work very collaboratively with them on many issues. This is not being something that obviously needs any negotiating, though. It is what we do. Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. Thank you. Is this substantially the same agreement as we've done in the past? Or is there any changes to it that we should know about?
No, sir, this largely constitutes the same agreement we've relied on for a couple of years.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional questions. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R1020?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, sorry.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now move on to item number two, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution number R1120. Matter of considering a resolution rescheduling the public hearing on proposed vacation of portion of public alley.
Is there a motion to approve R1120?
Motion to approve.
It appears that, I'm gonna say, the motion was made by Councilmember Blanchard and I believe supported by Councilmember Henon? Looked like I saw some yellow there. Okay, good, perfect. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of circumstances conspired to keep us from being able to execute the public hearing that we had scheduled for this meeting. Not the least of which was a change in the publication schedule on the newspaper that we have temporarily deemed to be our paper of record. And so we are proposing instead to reschedule that public hearing until July the 6th, giving us plenty of time to get everything we need to the paper, giving them plenty of time to satisfy their amended publication schedule. The alleyway in question remains the portion north of Eaton that runs parallels to Woodward. The businesses affected here would be behind the T-Mobile and terminating at the Charter or the Citizens Bank. So it's a pretty small section of alleyway there. Your packet includes the notice of public hearing that would be given, the resolution rescheduling said public hearing, as well as, you have shared in the past, some of the schematics and particulars on the context for this agreement, including the collaborative agreement that the City Council agreed to in a past meeting. And so all this, as well, I'm sorry, as well as the ordinance pertaining to this particular item. So we're just asking that the City Council merely reschedule this so that we can still hold a public hearing. We would just do it at the first meeting in July.
Okay. Any questions for our manager in regards to rescheduling the public hearing? For the reasons that he so eloquently laid out there? And it looks like you did a great job. Okay. Seeing no questions. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R1120?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M2320. Matter of considering a motion to approve the IT Services Amendment in order to waive the G2G fees and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment on the city's behalf.
Is there a motion to approve M2320?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mark Pollak joins us, our city finance director, to give you some of the particulars on his conversations with G2G. Just a brief introduction, the city has had an agreement with G2G since 2017. They provide a couple of different services for us, including bill pay and things that make their life a little bit easier on our residents. And so they have some amendments that agreements proposed that Mark has worked with them on. And so he'll have some additional information for you on that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pollak, sir, it's gonna be a busy evening for you.
Yes, the G2G is through the county. The county collects a fee and then shares that fee with communities that agree to allow them to collect the fee on behalf of residents. That's for taxes, for the most part, in the city. It's not a huge revenue, but the county agreed with the city of Berkeley on waiving fees. And in this case, they extended the agreement to the end of June. So this is a formal process to say that we agree to waive those fees until the end of June. The agreement, I believe, expired at the end of April, and they had a 60-day opportunity, which they took advantage of. And this agreement, once signed and sent, will align us with waiving those fees.
Okay, thank you. Questions for our finance director or city manager as it relates to waiving the fees from G2G? G2G? Okay, does not appear. It seems to be, again, pretty straightforward. Thank you for bringing this to us and allowing us to make this movement so that we can waive those fees. With no further ado, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M2320?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number four on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R1220. Matter of considering a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting the proposed City of Berkeley nondiscrimination policy.
Is there a motion to approve R1220?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's nondiscrimination policy has been scattered across several different ordinances, administrative directives, other kind of documents. So we moved in the direction, after seeing the city, after seeing Oakland County Board of Commissioners adopt a comprehensive nondiscrimination policy, we took their lead and likewise crafted the policy you see in front of you today. It covers various areas. There are six sections of it. It starts with a general provisions section that outlines protected classes that be adopted. Moves into guidance for employment opportunities, saying exactly what you'd imagine. The city does not and will continue to not discriminate against any of the protected classes for any reason and for, in this policy. Section 3 outlines, is a new section for us that we don't currently have in any of our existing policies. But again, following the lead of Oakland County, there's a section here on contracting for city services. There's a section on procurement of goods and equipment, broken out separately from contracting of services. There's a section 5, which allows for a slight modification of that language so that we can work with various companies who may not have a full text of a discrimination policy laid out as we do, but believe in the ideals that it outlines in our comprehensive document. And then the last section is provision of city services, which restates the fact that the city will provide equally its services to each and every member of our community, all residents, no matter of their, any of the protected classes that are outlined in that document. So this will become the one-stop shop for the city's policy as far as nondiscrimination goes. And as I said, it consolidates what we, the text that we have scattered out through a number of different various sources now. Submitted for your consideration.
Thank you. And as was mentioned, modeled certainly on the county's own policy, but making sure that we have something that is codified, that works for Berkeley, and that is enforceable to the city of Berkeley. So thank you. Questions, discussion on the proposed policy that we have before us? Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to the city staff, especially our city manager, Mr. Baumgarten, for all the work that you've done in taking Oakland County's policy and making it apply here in Berkeley, giving us the strath that's so closely based on and modeled on Oakland County's policy. There were a few additions that entered our policy in section 3, Contracting of City Services, that I was hoping we could discuss tonight. The clause in the first line with contractors for provision of services directly to the public. And then the sentence at the end that refers to isolated or singular instances, again, of the provision of services directly to the public. Those terms that were introduced that were not in Oakland County's policy, I am concerned with. I did have a conversation with Mr. Steren, our city attorney, over the weekend, trying to get at, I think we both agree, we want this policy to be enforceable. Absolutely, there's no point in having a policy if we can't enforce it. We also want to make sure that any clauses that we add like this are not losing the intent of the policy, which is to apply to the contracts that the city has to spend the taxpayers' money supporting contractors, subcontractors, et cetera, who don't discriminate. So, Mr. Steren, I guess my first question is for you. Have you had a chance to think through or work through this language or to share the thoughts that you had on it with the rest of council?
Well, you laid it out pretty well, Councilmember Price. I have thought about it. In fact, Manager Baumgarten and I spoke about it at some length today. We think particularly section 3 may need some further wordsmithing, subject to the discussion that we're just embarking on right now, where council wants to go with this. You've identified the potential issue or balancing act, if you will, correctly. We are trying to, we're adopting this policy or we're considering for adoption this policy tonight. We wanted to have broad application. But we, at the same time, are trying to balance that with providing our residents with the best services, with the best bang for the buck. And thinking of all the different types of vendors and contractors that we deal with, some of whom have considerable direct dealings with the city, with the city council and perhaps residents. And then we have other contractors whom the residents have minimal, if any, contact with. And so it's, again, trying to find that balance where we are promoting and enforcing and applying this policy, but not in a way where we are potentially, I guess, ruling out contractors who, for one reason or another, are maybe incapable of amending their policies because maybe they're a national company, for instance, that doesn't have the ability to change for every local contract. Or as you mentioned, the different types of contractors. We have contractors like myself, who deals directly with you and with the public. We have other contractors, like someone who might be working on the sewer pipe or paving a road, who you maybe see them, but aren't dealing directly with people. So we are really, I'm going on and on here, but we are really looking for guidance tonight as to how broad council wants to go with this. The county's policy is very broad, potentially to the point where, if applied, it could rule out certain contractors that the city has had regular or historic dealings with or would like to. And we're just, again, trying to find that balance and really looking for guidance from council based on your discussion and questions tonight. Then the manager and I can do the appropriate wordsmithing to accomplish what it is that council wants to accomplish.
So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm, hold on, Ms. Councilmember Price, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. The intent and the spirit of what we have proposed here is what we want to continue, but the actual way that it's worded, the semantics of what the words say may not necessarily be able to be applied as we would like. Is that what I'm understanding? And so we need to be able to, as you mentioned, wordsmith a little bit to keep our intent, but also to give the city still the ability that it needs to, in certain circumstances, to enter into contracts.
Right, you just said in 20 seconds what took me several minutes to spit out.
All right, well, thank you for that. We are, I think, on the same page now. So other thoughts? First, we'll stick with this item. And then we'll talk about anything else in the policy that we want to discuss. So any additional thoughts on what we've talked about here? Okay, well, seeing nobody jumping out right now. Again, Mr. Steren, so in my estimation, in what I said, I don't see this as being a substantive change to the policy we're looking at. I look at it more as a matter of the words. Is that accurate? And the reason I ask is, if it's not a substantive change and there are no other precluding issues that necessitate going back before we, you know, to another first reading, or if this is a change that is not substantive in nature and we can still approve a first reading, know that there'll be some wordsmithing done before we approve the second reading?
All right, well, keep in mind, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Keep in mind, this is a policy. So it's not something quite
Yeah, that's true.
So you can have as many readings. You can adopt it tonight. You can adopt part of it tonight. You could bring it back 10 times. I tend to agree that the changes, and I think most of this policy is probably, probably section 3 is the one we're really focusing on right now. The rest of the policy, I suspect council is ready to move on. And section 3, I think what Ms. Price said is correct. We're of the same mind on it, but I'm not sure that our wording is quite there yet. And what we are trying to do is, again, promote and implement this policy, but not at the risk of unintended consequences, I guess, to put it generally.
Yeah, I apologize. We were ordinance happy on the last agenda when everything needed a second reading, but we already got through all of that today, thanks to Ms. Mitchell on the consent agenda. This is just a resolution. So leaving that issue aside for a second, any other comments or questions as it relates to this policy anywhere else in the text? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Actually, not about the rest of the text, but back on the same section. I do, I like the idea of making some fine-tune tweaks to this section, if that makes sense. And I appreciate the way that you framed it, Mr. Mayor, with the, with the bit of, little bit of work that needs to be done. It doesn't necessarily constitute coming back again for a big, you know, second pass, so to speak. I applaud, again, the county in its wisdom for putting forth such a I applaud, again, the county in its wisdom for putting forth such a, a resolution, and the great work of our staff, the city manager and team, in consolidating this to, to align with, with where we're headed. So, I like the idea of where we're heading. I do like the idea of, you know, if we have a resolution, let's mean it, right? Let's make this thing apply where, where it makes sense to, and, and show that there's, you know, this is really something that we truly believe in, and it's not just a, a piece of paper. So, I'm in favor of doing what we can to ensure that this covers the, covers the appropriate basis in a way that, that we can, that we can be happy with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments, or proposed tweaks to our resolution? Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah. When I think of, well, I think two things with the city, that we can't discriminate, we must not discriminate against the people we serve for any reason, and we must not discriminate against the people we hire as employees for any reason. Where it gets fuzzy is the contractors and perhaps their own beliefs and religious freedoms. But they also don't have a constitutionally guaranteed right to have contracts with the city. You know, there's two bright lines. Either we allow people to discriminate on everything, or we allow them to discriminate on nothing. I'm comfortable with, if this is the intent of Section 5, modification of language, that if we find ourselves in a situation where a vendor is close, and it would be in the best interest of the city to allow that vendor, if they meet most, but not all of that, that that as an escape valve for the occasional circumstances where we may need it.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I?
Councilmember Price?
Yes. So, one of the question, another question that I asked Mr. Sterin when I discussed this section with him, and, and actually, the policy as a whole, is, are we requiring of everyone we contract with to have the same policy word, by word, that we have within their own organizational structure? Or are we asking them to agree that for the sake of their contract with Berkeley, that they will follow our nondiscrimination policy? And I think his answer to that addresses Mr. Hennan's concerns, but, again, Mr. Sterin, would you be willing to share the answer and the thought process with all of council there?
Right. Well, what we can't do, nor do we want to do, is try to restructure or manage private businesses and vendors and contractors who deal with us. But what we can do, in fact, we, we do it in many respects already, is we have certain requirements that we build into our requests for bids, our requests for proposals, and in our standard contract language. And so, that's what we would be doing here, and for purposes of the contract, we would, the contract with the city, that is, we would be requiring the contractors to agree to these terms, that they are, you know, basically everything we, we have in here, that they are not going to discriminate among people that they employ and work with in, in, in any means, by, you know, by, by any measure, or based on any particular class, or, or belief, or quality. So, in, in a way, we, we, we are affecting just the particular contract, but by agreeing to this, it, it does affect the company's policies as a whole.
Right. I would say we're, we're more leaning towards the latter of Councilmember Price's two scenarios that, that she laid out, and with, with Section 5 giving us the ability where we need to, to make modifications as required.
I, I think we, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, I think Section 3 could use some work, for instance, in my discussion with Mrs. Price this, this weekend, the word directly that was inserted, really, I think, in two places, was well intended, but perhaps narrows the coverage more than what council would intend. So, we can work on that, but I also think some work, or massaging, if you will, of Section 5 to add, not a lot, but a little bit more flexibility there for waiver or modification, similar to what, what Councilman Hennan was suggesting. I don't think it's a major change, but just to clean that, clean that up and clarify it a bit more.
Thank you.
I would just like to go on record that I would not support changing Section 5 so that one of the contractors could say, oh, we won't discriminate against most of these classes, but we will, are allowed to discriminate against a few.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that. I, I don't think we want to provide in there the ability to waive any substantive differences from our policy. What I want to avoid is situations where maybe substantively we're there, but there's some technical noncompliance that just isn't quite covered by our, our language here, and that's, that's among the unintended consequences I think we want to avoid.
Mr. Sterin, isn't that already in Section 5, when it gives the city manager or their designee the, the ability to approve as long as their language meets the intent of our policy?
I think that's basically there. I just want to make sure that's crystal clear. That's why I say, I'm not talking about a rewrite, I'm talking about it, some clarifying tweaks.
Thank you.
But you are correct.
It, it seems like we are all saying the same things, just we need to, to clean some things up. Not changing the spirit of what we're doing, not giving anybody a quote unquote, get out of discriminate card, you know, free, we're not doing that. That is not the point here. So, I'm comfortable with moving forward, knowing that we'll make a few small tweaks that are nonsubstantive, that are not going to change the spirit of the resolution that we have, and the policy that we have in front of us, and to give us something in force while we are cleaning it up. What is the rest of council? I'm seeing some heads nod, any, I'm not seeing any heads nodding this way. Okay. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. I just like, see, I, I, I agree with this. I, I do agree that we have to clean up our language a little bit, because we have to be able to accept the language of major, we deal with companies like Freightliner, and Ford, and GM, and they have their own policy. We have to be able to say, your policy is good enough for us, and we will not make you sign our policy, because in a lot of cases, they're not going to do it. So, we have to be, have to be proactive with that, and make sure that, that we're getting to, still getting the best deal with the best vendors, and not isolating anybody, but make, still making sure that they meet the intent of our resolution.
Okay. Any other changes to the policy as written?
Again, going along with providing directions, Councilmember Blanchard, the examples that you gave, I, I do think that there are some of those similar exceptions, when we know that our policy would not be enforceable with resources that we require, and maybe, again, with that tweak of language, that we'll need to make an exception for. But I don't want the best bang for the buck to be the guiding principle here. Again, I want to use the taxpayers' money responsibly, to make sure that we're spending it on contracts, supporting nondiscrimination policy that we agree. So, I, again, I don't think we completely disagree, but I, in terms of guidance, nondiscrimination policy, I think should trump best bang for buck.
I think we're saying the same thing. I'm just saying, we have to be able to look at their policies and make sure they agree with ours. And in some cases, we would want to, them to sign, some kind of, to sign a statement saying they do. In some cases, we just look at their, look at their policy and make the decision that it complies with ours.
I think this is a situation where we have a number of different people trying to say the same things, but using slightly different words, but having the same intent, and that is critical for this discussion. With that, and, and as I've asked a few times, I don't have, I haven't seen any other points brought up that require changing, potentially, or amending. So, with that, Ms. Mitchell, and, and council, assuming it's comfortable, would you please call the roll on R 1220?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Cherbrack?
Yes.
And we now move on to item number five on our agenda.
Resolution number R 1320, matter of considering a resolution of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting the updated City of Berkeley Title VI Nondiscrimination Plan.
Motion to approve R 1320.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ray. Along the same line, the city has had, for many years, a nondiscrimination policy through our, required through the Civil Rights Act. The specific section is Title VI, which is where the, the title of this document comes from. Our last, our last update came in 2011, and given the action here this evening, we would like to propose updating it again, to include the protected classes adopted by the city's new nondiscrimination policy. That document as a whole has been shared with council, and you'll, and, and in the past, and they've had it with them for quite a while. The Title VI documents is on our website, it's specific to purchasing, mostly, and so you'll find it in that section of the city's website. So, it is shared publicly as well, again, as we adopt sort of our front facing policies to the world. Just note that this, this document will be publicized on our website as well. So, the section that we're hoping to amend is the first portion, specifically that the nondiscrimination policy is outlined in this document, making sure that it is consistent with the policy that was updated in the previous action. And so, a small change, the, the rest of the changes are just updated formatting and appropriate staff members to contact, we're updating those individuals' names and titles and contact information.
We are updating our Title VI policy to reflect the nondiscrimination policy that we just approved by resolution. Any additional discussion or questions for our manager on this? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Ray. Is the items in red on the policy statement the only thing that changed in this policy? Because normally, we get a marked up copy, and that's the only thing I see that's highlighted here. Is that all that's changed?
Yes, that's the only substantive change. The rest were to update titles of individuals to contact, as well as how to get ahold of them.
And that would be in the appendix E?
The, there's a complaint document, this appendix E would be the complaint form, that will be updated based on the, the actions this evening.
Okay. And that's not been included in this package that we received?
No. The Form E, the complaint form itself, has, is in draft form now, hasn't been completed, but it was, it's, will be completed now that council's taken action on the, the previous action item. So, we do have appendixes A, B, C, and D included in the nondiscrimination policy, or the Title VI policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Everybody's in a different place tonight, so I really, I really have to scan to, to find everybody's heads here. But it, yeah, well, Steve, I can see you, you're not hiding. Councilmember Price, I do see you.
Yes, and I guess I just partly want to clarify from people watching at home, that this nondiscrimination policy that we just adopted independently does trickle down and affect some other things that are currently in place, like the Title VI. And I was wondering, too, if city manager, Mr. Baumgartner, if you could also mention some of the other policies, administrative directives, different documents that the city uses that will now be updated with our new nondiscrimination policy, like Title VI?
Certainly. Title VI is one that does require the governing body adoption, but we do have a number of things that will be updated administratively, based on the, the council's adoption of the nondiscrimination policy. That does include administrative directions on harassment and discrimination. That does include the updates, updates to the packets. Whenever we put out an RFP, there are a number of different documents that need to be signed and sent back to the city as we review our bids, so there'll be an update to that document as well. Our merit system will eventually need to be adopted to include this language as well. That is something that comes before this body, as well as any new contract, labor, labor contracts, will be updated to include that information as well, when they've been, upon their next adoption. So, not to say that we, we won't put those into effect with our labor until that point, but the language won't be included until there's a rewrite of those documents now. Until that point, we'll include the nondiscrimination policy as more or less an appendix to, to those documents, and they'll be sent to the entire employment, the entire City of Berkeley staff, so they're aware of the updates as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further clarification or questions? I see Ms. Mitchell's already unmuted herself, she's just itching to call the roll. Seeing, seeing nobody else? All right, Ms. Mitchell, please, call the roll.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cherbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number six on tonight's agenda.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding reprogramming 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Okay. So, I will declare the public hearing open at 8:07. And just to, sorry, as we've done for citizens' comments, if there are any here, anybody that would like to speak, either raise your hand, or what was it, star nine or pound nine you said on the phone? Which one was it?
Star nine.
Star nine, okay. So, if there is anybody for the public hearing would like to comment, please do so now.
At this time, I am not seeing any hands raised, or the little icon that says hands raised.
Okay. Give one more, a couple more seconds, just in case anybody is frantically trying to get in here. Okay. Nobody else?
No.
Seeing nobody else, or no additional comments, I will close the public hearing at 8:08. And then we will move on to number seven, which is going to sound awfully familiar. Ms. Mitchell?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and supporting tax rates for the city of Berkeley, Michigan.
Okay. We are now going to open that public hearing at 8:08. Same rules apply. Please raise your hand in Zoom or dial in star nine if you, to send a notification so that we know you would like to comment. And while we're doing that, in case you forget, the number is 1312-626-6799, 1312-626-6799. Ms. Mathis?
No comments raised at this time.
Seeing no additional comments, I will close the public hearing at 8:09, and we will move headlong into the budget and Mr. Pollak's portion of our evening tonight. Ms. Mitchell, would you please begin that with item number eight? Ms. Mitchell, would you please begin that with item number eight?
Resolution number R 1420, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2020, 2021 through 2026, 2027 Capital Improvements Plan of the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there any motion to approve R 1420?
So moved, support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner, you want to start us off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you know, this is the first of four different resolutions that the City Council must adopt in order to make the upcoming fiscal year's budget effective. As you'll, I'm sure you'll remember, City Council spent just over seven and a half hours last week discussing this budget line by line, item by item, dollar by dollar, as we went through a very intensive review of each department's requests for expenditures, as well as an overview of the revenue picture that we will be looking at for the budget that begins on July 1st of this calendar year. And so what we now, what you now are the four individual resolutions that are required in order to, to make all that hard work worthwhile. And the first of that is the Capital Improvements Plan. As you'll see, in, in the next couple of years, all the way through 26, 27, we're looking at a total of, and I hope, glad everyone's sitting down for this, about $42 million, nearly $43 million worth of improvements into the city. Those are physical improvements into the city that make Berkeley a better place. And so that is the first of the resolutions that come before you this evening.
So as, as Mr. Baumgartner alluded to, these resolutions, a series of resolutions that will follow, are all a result of the budget hearings, not just the budget hearings, but the budget hearings last week. And if any of the residents haven't been able to watch those yet, I, I just want to draw attention to a couple of things. First, the budget this year is certainly undergone significant changes since the budget process began in January. COVID-19 has had significant impact, not only on what we are able to do as a city, but how we are able to provide the services to our residents that our residents deserve ultimately. And this is, is a budget that is eerily reminiscent of the budgets that followed 2008, and in some cases, 2009, in that we are focusing clearly on needs and not wants. And that means that some of those needs or wants, in both cases, in capital improvements, are going to be delayed until we are in a fiscal position to be able to do those things in the future. And I want to draw special attention to the agility of all of our departments, and our finance department certainly in there, in being able to make the significant adjustments, some more depressing than others, in order to have not only a balanced budget, a solid budget, but a budget that is built on safety, maintaining the services, but also maintaining the safety of our budget, the safety of our bond rating, and the safety of our residents moving forward. And that will be a consistent theme that may be echoed here as we go through these various items. So I wanted to start with that. And council members, if you would like to comment on the overall budget process right now, this would certainly be a good time to do so. You certainly can, as we're going through individual, each of the individual resolutions, but just at least in, in general, those are, those hearings are the most important work that we do as elected officials, is mining the resources of the City of Berkeley and making sure that we are doing so in a very responsible way while looking towards the future. And there are practical difficulties that we know we are going to have in the future. I've spoken with a number of state and federal legislatures. We know that state shared revenue is going to continue to, it will be slashed. We don't know what that's going to look like. They've given us some numbers, but it is going to be slashed. And we have to know, and the way that our property tax system works with, with Proposal A and Headley, we are also limited to how, how much we can recover and how quickly we can, we can recover. So that's a good thing and a bad thing. It's a great thing for us, and that our property taxes aren't going to skyrocket in a given year, but it does take longer for the city's overall budget to recover, which is what we saw the last few years. We were able to make significant capital improve, capital improvements in the city because we got to a point where we were able to do so again. This is going to have a similar impact on, on future budgets, certainly the next five years, if not more, as we seek to rebound and recover from what's going on. So if council members would like to make additional comments, I guess I made additional comments, but I'll open it up to you for, at this time, as we move through our process. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to comment on the overall budget process that this is just a plan. It's not a commitment that we're going to spend every penny. And you can still be nimble, and as the situation changes, we can still adopt. But we have to start with a plan, and we're working with the best information available to us right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would take that even a step further. It is a plan. It's also a list of priorities. And what we're doing is prioritizing those, certainly those things that we need to do, and we do have the flexibility in the future, so circumstances change, to allow us to obviously make changes as well. So thank you for that comment. Additional comments? Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to echo mainly the comments that I made during the budget hearings and to commend our, all of our departments, our city staff, for doing such an incredible job and really taking to heart and understanding the constraints that we're operating under at this time. And so it's always hard to cut something, but I think that everyone, every department and city staff approached this with that in mind, and, and they were being mindful of the resources that we have. And so just thank you all again for that. And it's really, it's, it's a pulling together of people as a team and, you know, working positively to move the city forward in spite of the difficulties that we're under. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else looking to jump in and heads nodding, of course, we also, we have opportunities to discuss this at the budget hearings and maybe in some of our comments at the end of the meeting. Any additional questions or comments as it relates to R 1420? I do not see any. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 1420?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now move on to the second resolution in this section here. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R 1520, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection indisposable, in disposal of solid waste effective July 1st, 2020.
Is there any motion to approve R 1520?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Solid waste is basically everything you get picked up at the curbside. This fund include, this fund is where we pay for services like curbside trash pickup, curbside recycling, curbside yard waste collection. So the finance department goes through and takes a look at this budget each year, and then sets a, there's a couple of fees. There's the quarterly household charge, which this year would be about $15.45, or about $61.80 per year. And then there's Section 4 itemizes other purchases, such as the poly carts that we, that we sell at the DPW for curbside collection. So again, Mr. Pollak probably would have more insight on how that process comes together.
Mr. Pollak, I know you're here, but you have moved on my screen. There you are. Okay, you're out.
Yes. I appreciate it. You've, you've once again proven mayor and council that you're on top of things. Your process for the budget makes it easy for the finance department to, really to put this together and get it before you. Your support of all of us is, is greatly appreciated. And again, I will commend you for your process and, and everything you do because you are the ultimate decision makers. I will commend Matt as well as the city manager. He, he knows this budget inside and out. He knows it better than I do. And that's a sign again of a strong leader. So I will say that, that the refuse fund is, the solid waste fund is going to come before you and, and the residents here in the near future, just because the, the Headley rollback has taken the rate to a level that's dangerously close to spending the fund balance. There will be after this year and next year as well, because again, we're, we're doing the best we can to keep that fund afloat. But we'll have a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, but we may want to look here in a couple of years at, at a Headley override just to continue to provide those services. But the fact that you do have some flexibility in your water and sewer rates, where you can levy the additional amounts for residential and for commercial, we're, I think our projected amount this year is about $29,000 deficit use of fund balance, which is, is very good, to be honest with you. But like I said, our, our rollback rate is extremely low from the three that were allowed through the state. So we'll look at that in a couple of years, but you continue to be excellent stewards of taxpayer money. And, and like I said, I, I think this process is very good, and, and we'll address it when the time comes. But right now, we're, we're around 200, projected around 212,000 at the end of the proposed fiscal year. So we'll still be okay. We won't be in great shape there, but we'll be in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions for our finance director or our city manager? Or for yourselves, as you've passed this or are about to pass this? Okay. Seeing nobody else, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 1520?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 1620, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the charges for water and sewer services effective July 1st, 2020.
Is there any motion to approve R 1620?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed during the budget session, in each year, a large part of the city's water and sewer fund is actually a pass-through. We work with both the Great Lakes Water Authority, as well as the South Oakland County Water Authority, GLEWA and SACWA respectively. They set in a large part the rates that the city applies each year because we do not produce our own water, nor do we treat our own sewage. There is a portion of the city's water and sewer budget that is dedicated to physical improvements and system improvements for the water and sewer fund. But again, so for the large part, we are consumers of these products, much like our residents are at a, just at an aggregated level. The resolution you have in front of you today is a great amount of detail. It starts off with some of the legal notes that set thresholds and protections for, for residents, and that's what we go by when we set these rates. And then the subsequent sections go item by item and all the various fees that we would serve, that we charge. It's difficult to say, you know, a singular rate because it depends greatly on the size of your meter, how much you consume. But in, in generally speaking, it looks like about, it's, it's going to be about a 3% increase to, to our residents and business owners. And so we did everything we could to keep those numbers as minimal as possible, and again, just holding very tightly to the increases that were passed on to us. I will note, as we discussed during the, the budget hearings, we do continue to see be one of the lowest rates in our, in the SACWA footprint, typically second only to, oh, not Beverly Hills, second only Bingham Farms. Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Second only to Bingham Farms for the last several years as, as having the, the lowest rate. So they are a village, we're a city, so we can actually say we're the lowest city, but the second lowest municipality in the area.
Well, they use wells, so we're not going to, we're not going to. If, if we were in person, I'm sure Councilmember Blanchard would be presenting us all with our index card with those numbers. But, but as the city manager mentioned, it is primarily pass-through that we are working with here, and we do our best to, to keep those pass-throughs increases as low as, as we can. Mr. Pollak, is there anything else that you would like to add that was not already covered?
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, I think the commitment, again, of the council to follow a rate study that was done, I believe back in 2016, that continues to commit capital to your water and sewer fund. Your assets are mostly in the ground in your water and sewer fund, but we work from what we call the working capital model, which is really the money that's available to do projects. And we generate enough through revenues each year to continue to do those projects. And committed again this year in the budget before you is about $2 million worth of those projects, including sewer lining and some water main maintenance and repair. So those are commitments the council makes on an annual basis to continue to upgrade the infrastructure of the water and sewer fund, which is, again, it's, it's a, a strong commitment of financial resources that you have here.
Certainly something that we are proud of, especially as it relates to our sewer relining program. And our DPW Director, Derek Schuler, and our foreman, Sean Young, do a tremendous job of making sure that we are continuing to lead in that aspect. Additional comments? Councilmember Henan?
Yes, I just wanted to comment about the requirement to replace lead service lines. While it's a noble cause, it's an unfunded mandate from the state in that we have to do it at the state's timeline and with their criteria, and not a local decision of how best to do it for ourselves. And it's going to be a significant cost and is probably going to, over time, deplete a lot of our reserves, capital reserves there, and result in additional increase in water bills to take care of it. Thanks.
It does specialize in, in unfunded mandates. It is certainly one of their specialties, and we are left then figuring out how we are going to fund that mandate. Yes, it is, as you mentioned, something that's important, but we have to find the resources to make that happen on their timeline. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Ryan. Just to clarify on what Councilmember Henan said, the, the total cost that over 20 years is going to be just under $7 million. So it's a substantial hit to us and for the residents to know that they'll be seeing this for years to come as we continue to fund, fund this and get rid of the lead service lines.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 1620?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
As we come to the last of the package, we have the, the big one here. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 11?
Resolution number R 1720, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021.
Is there any motion to approve R 1720?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protem Dean. This is the overall budget. We have made some, some general comments. Mr. Baumgartner, would you like to specify this item a little bit more?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. It is in this document that we are adopting the actual millage rates that we'll be assessing on people's properties, as well as a breakdown of those millage rates. You'll see there, in total, we're at about 16.5476 mils this year. Again, we have seen this number drop a little bit each year. In fact, we're already lower than where we were. In fact, we're already lower than where we were just in twenty sixteen, even with the recent addition of two mils specific for infrastructure. The city has been prudent in retiring debt. In fact, in next year's budget, we'll see a decrease even on that particular line item as well. So that's right. So currently, we levy point four five mils for eleven mile road, and this is the last year for that. So we're excited to see that fall off as well. So the city's tax levy continues to fall again. As we mentioned in the previous agenda item, we're not the only ones that you're paying for when you turn your tax bill into the city. But the city has certainly done its part to be prudent in how it expended its resources and where it takes its tax levies. The document is, the resolution document in total is about eight pages. And so you'll see it goes through each of the city's funds, goes line item by line item and how it intends to expend those funds, what the anticipated revenues are, the sources of those revenues. It's a very, it's a very good representation of what is normally a three hundred page document as far as the line items go. So any of the residents who are interested in just a quick view of what the city plans to do or as the mayor said, what the city's values are, you'll see where the investment in infrastructure, health and safety and wellness, it comes through, shines like a bright light through this particular document. So I can answer any particular questions, members of council. As I said, I know we went through many, many hours of the individual line items to get to these totals. But the city did put forth a, what we think is a good budget that provides the residents of Berkeley the same services they've come to know for many, many years in light of some of the most trying times we've known in a generation.
The only addition I will make before I ask Mr. Pollak if he has any additional comments, is that we don't know what the full impact of COVID nineteen will be. There will be amendments made to this. We've tried to make some that we know, but there will be additional amendments as programs maybe don't happen. So we don't have revenue, but there's also things that won't happen that we won't be expending capital on either because we're not able to this year. So we will see a number of amendments once we actually know what the impact will be on us and then we're able to close the books as we get closer to the end of this year. Mr. Pollak, anything else you would like to add regarding our budget?
Just send some commendation to Lori Fielder, who puts together the budget. Very difficult circumstances this year. Her and I have not been in the same room since mid-March. And her and I usually work closely together on putting this document together, a lot of emails, a lot of frustration. But we certainly were happy to get the document to council for approval tonight. And the city manager covered it very well. You know, a lot of thought, a lot of effort went into this. We got started a couple of weeks later than usual as far as really getting into the nuts and bolts here. And as you said, Mayor, a lot of unknowns. We will likely be doing budget amendments next fiscal year. And we generally do quarterly. We might be doing them more often. In fact, they heard today in one of the MML and the Treasury webinars, they may be recommending monthly budget amendments as things get a little clearer in the budget picture. But, you know, we're gonna wait and see, but I think we put a good plan in place for everyone to look at and we'll make amendments as we need to.
And again, you mentioned it, but your department, especially you and Lori, and Lori being a part of those budget hearings, certainly thank her for the time and you guys being able to adapt and the flexibility of working in, you know, a non-traditional way. And maybe this will be more frequent in the future, but it was a very quick and steep learning curve for everybody and being able to get all of the information to all of us in a timely manner so that we could go through it and have those hearings. So I do want to commend you for the work that your staff has done and that you have done as well. Thank you. Additional comments on the budgets in general? Council member Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. I'd just like to thank the city manager and all of the department heads. I think the department heads came to the budget meetings well prepared. As you mentioned earlier, we had about seven and a half hours of budget meetings. Everybody came in, was prepared. And as you know, with COVID nineteen, we were changing things on the fly. And Mark and Lori adapted well, so I think it was a real team effort and we come up with a really good budget. And I just want to thank everybody, all the department heads for doing such a great job and coming in prepared for the meeting.
Yeah, it's easy to present a budget and to ask for things when things are going well and we know that we have the resources. It's much more difficult than in a situation like we saw this process. And Matt's leadership as city manager and making sure that the department heads were prepared was very important. And again, you know, there are few, there's nothing that's more important than this, but there are a few things that require more time and attention than the city's budget. And being able to adapt in a matter of weeks to changing circumstances is something that, you know, we had to deal with just like everybody else. But I think we were able to adapt a little bit more swiftly than maybe some of our peers in other communities. And that's a testament to being prepared. So I certainly echo those statements, council member Blanchard. Anything else that we would like to comment on? Does not appear so. So with that, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the rule on R seventeen twenty?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We have now reached our second public comments for the evening. This is for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. We will play by the same rules that we played by earlier. If your concern needs to be addressed, I should say, by a member of city staff, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call at two four eight six five eight three three one zero. If you would like to comment now, please raise your hand if you are in the meeting or dial into one three one two six two six six seven nine nine. And you will be recognized by either name or number as you were earlier. Three minute time limit still applies. And when you speak, please state your name and city of residence.
There's no one at this present moment, Mayor.
All right, we'll give them another, another second, although in fairness, this meeting, we've had that number listed off a number of times, unlike some of the other meetings, but just in case. Still nobody?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And we will close our second public comments portion and we will move on to communications. And we will start with council member Baker.
Thank you, your honor, and hello, everybody again. And I'm sure I'm just, because of the structure of the agenda, it's my pleasure to lead the congratulations and thank yous to, on behalf of council, to administration and staff for all the great work that's been happening with preparations for and delivering a very robust and thoughtful budget for the next fiscal year and with insights into the following year. As mentioned earlier, the budgets are really a statement of our values and our priorities. And as things shift and adjust based on the changing world around us, obviously, we have mechanisms in place to adjust. But this budget puts forth the, our collective values and intents for the coming year to help build on the great progress that we've made and very thankful again to staff for all their tremendous efforts. The historical committee is eager to meet. They're looking forward to when the city is able to help support committees having similar virtual sessions like we're having now. In the meanwhile, they wanted to remind everyone that May is Berkeley History Month. And to please feel free to like and join and follow the official Facebook group for the Berkeley Historical Museum. And there may be a book or two written on the subject too of the city's history. If you're interested in checking that out, you can get them at the library or your favorite online or local bookstore. The technology committee is also eager to rock and roll with meetings. There's a healthy backlog of potential items. And meanwhile, they've been staying in touch with one another here as we prepare for coming back online. The Downtown Development Authority was able to meet, the board of the DDA was able to meet last week's Wednesday, their second virtual meeting. The wayfinding efforts, which are basically, you know, the signs that we have entering the city and within the city to guide folks which way to go to get to their favorite destinations. That is being, you know, ramped up in anticipation of being able to get some progress here yet this year, this calendar year, which spreads to fiscal years, so they're excited about that. But more importantly, the DDA has been doing a tremendous job, largely in partnership with the chamber, to help support our local businesses. These are exceptionally difficult times for all of us. And, you know, business owners are people too. They've put their heart and soul into work, into the work that they offer and the products that they carry and the services that they provide. And the DDA is doing what it can to help ensure that they have the resources that they need and access to information and access to financial means to keep things going as we slowly work our way toward reopening more and more of our society here in the coming weeks and months. And in fact, there's even working on a reopening video, a video source that helps some business owners with tips and tricks on what to do to stay safe, to follow all of the recommended guidelines and best practices to ensure their employees and their customers and their products stay safe. And finally, it was Mahatma Gandhi who once said, "It is health that is the real wealth, not pieces of gold and silver." And so apart from the rainy weather that we've been experiencing lately, it has been a fantastic time here in the city to get out, walk around and enjoy. And it's been great to see people out and around. And, you know, so many of us continue to struggle. The reason that they're available or able to be out and walk around is because they can't get to work or they can't work or their businesses are shut down still. So what we can do is to remind ourselves that our health is our most valuable asset when it comes down to it. And to continue to do what we can to both take care of ourselves, you know, with the finances we have and the business owners that need to do work and things like that, and the folks like us that need to try to make ends meet. But please don't sacrifice your long-term health for a short-term opportunity. It's just, it's just too important. So I just wanted to, again, close by saying, you're not stuck at home. You're safe at home. With that, thank you very much. Have a safe night.
Thank you. Council member Price?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I wanted to start by thanking all of the residents who sent in emails and joined our meeting tonight and communicated your pride in living in such a safe, inclusive and welcoming community. We still have work to do, probably always will. But nevertheless, your comments and the votes of council tonight reflect our city's commitment to fight discrimination and to celebrate the contributions of members of the LGBTQIA+ community. You are seen, heard and valued here. I also want to thank the city staff who helped draft these documents and while juggling the day-to-day functions of the city, also helping us work on other big picture policies, budgets and resident engagement for the master plan process. They're working hard from home and I'm so grateful for the work that they're doing. And thank you to all the department heads who presented council with thoughtful edited budgets that focus on frugality and safety during this prolonged time of financial uncertainty. All of these groups, citizens, staff, department heads, I think your city leaders as well, we want everyone in Berkeley to feel safe, secure and supported. Berkeley cares and I'm so proud to call it home. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. There's a couple of things tonight. We're working closely with the chamber and the DDA on keeping information flowing to the businesses. We're getting a lot of information coming out of the State Emergency Operations Center on new state policies. We've been providing all that to the DDA and to the chamber so they can get it out to the businesses so they can analyze it and see some of it involves tax times when they have to pay that have been moved around and things like that. So we're providing that and both the chamber and DDA are doing a fantastic job of getting that out. Also, please continue to support our local businesses and their food establishments. We're trying to support small businesses to keep them here in Berkeley when things get opened up again. And if you need a list of all the food establishments, chamber website at berkeleychamber.com has a list of all the establishments, whether they're open or closed, if they're open, what their hours are and phone numbers and websites so you can look up their menu. So please help with the local businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member Blanchard. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, your honor. The Parks and Rec Department is in the initial stages of their five-year recreation master plan. They will be seeking input for the plan in the coming months, probably via this kind of platform. I'm not sure. Parks and Rec continues to engage on social platforms, providing various recreation ideas because the goal really is to keep people moving and keep people doing things. And so you are welcome and actually encouraged to post photos to the Facebook page or to send them to Parks and Rec hashtags, stay in and play Berkeley. So if you want to contribute to that, Parks and Rec is open to receiving that. We are continuing to do our wellness checks. They're going very well. If you are not on the list and would like a phone call, please call me, Bridgette Dean, at two four eight nine three zero zero five four four and I will be happy to add you to the list. Remember, this too shall pass and we are Berkeley strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Henan?
Yes, the zoning board of appeals met last week and they approved the two variance requests they heard. One to replace the sign of the American Legion with a new LED sign and then another for a resident proposing a driveway expansion that's larger than normal. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all on council. No, I'm just kidding. Council member Gavin?
Thank you, your honor. Just a couple of quick things. Since our last council meeting, there hasn't actually been a planning commission meeting or master plan steering committee meeting. The next planning commission meeting will be May twenty sixth, next Tuesday at seven PM, a week from tomorrow. And then the master plan steering committee scheduled for tomorrow, May nineteenth, is actually not going to happen. And in its place will be the first of eight webinars dealing with various master plan topics. So tomorrow's Zoom meeting starts at four PM and will cover what a master plan looks like broadly with the link to join in the city calendar on the city's website. So there'll be, these are going to be very informative webinars. And for even more great information about the whole master planning process, you can visit the city's website at berkleymish.org and then click on the master plan link at the top of the page. And once you're on that page, you can take the survey to give your feedback on the important issues that are facing our community. And certainly with all the trials that this present situation brings, you know, folks are, have a real chance with this master planning process to be able to help impact and shape, you know, what the future looks like. And so I hope that you'll make your voices heard for sure. So the environmental advisory committee has not been able to meet, but is certainly one of the many committees that is excited to get back at it once it's doable. And then lastly, I just want to echo my colleagues' comments and thanking city manager, Mark, Lori and all the department heads and staff as a whole for their hard work and dedication during the budgeting process. You know, certainly despite this difficult time, the city manager and department heads, you know, the excellent job that was done gave much, much reason for optimism. So thank you all very much and that's all I have.
Thank you. With us this evening, as he gets a final drink to get ready, we have our public policy assistant, Dan Hill, to provide an update on marijuana.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for having me, right here from the bounds of my living room. So we, the internal policy team, have been hard at work putting together an updated marijuana application period. As many know, it was set to begin March sixteenth due to COVID. That did not happen out of the flurry of executive orders that came out as well as city hall closing to the public the very next day after that. With that, we have altered our submission process as well as the timeline. Our process now looks Um our process now looks into um limiting in-person contact. So applications are gonna be submitted. Um they can be submitted via certified postage or the city hall Dropbox. Within those packages, to make them easier to mail as well as to fit into the Dropbox, the envelope should include three identical flash drives, which will include their application as well as any supporting documents. Um many familiar with this sort of process know that there's hundreds of pages of documents that they'll need to submit with that to to qualify for those points, as well as show their case for why they deserve uh to get a license here in the city. They'll need one physical copy of the marijuana business license application with original signatures, um without the supporting documents. That's just that nine-page document posted on the website. And then they'll need to submit a check or money order for their fees for the application. Um so that's five thousand dollars for one single use or ten thousand dollars for a co-location use. Uh following the submission of that, city staff will do the completeness check. We will communicate that completeness check using email that's provided on that application. They'll then have a subsequent deadline to remedy any missing information, um similar to the normal process that we had before, but more virtual. And then um following that, they'll receive a a receipt as well via email and in the mail that will indicate their application number, which is how we will publicize the points at the end of the evaluation period. Um from there, the submission period timeline's been amended as follows. As set by the city manager per the ordinance, the application submission period will open June fifteenth at eight thirty A. M., and it will close June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty at five P. M. Five P. M. being the deadline for those dropping off at the city hall Dropbox. Anything mailed will need to be postmarked by that deadline date, um so we'll be checking the postmarks on that as well. And all of this will be going up on the city website. It was just published about five minutes ago in an inter or an external memo to community members, uh which also includes how they can ask questions and get answers. And I will open it up to any of you who have any questions.
Well, I'm not gonna allow people to ask you questions right now. We don't want to get down too far down the rabbit hole. Thank you for providing that information, as long as it is public and on the website. Uh well, certainly, I'm sure, go and check that out, and if we do have questions at that point, so what we have in front of us, we'll make sure to uh respond to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, for being with us this evening. And now we move on to our city manager.
How's it going, Mayor? First up, uh as mentioned several times this evening, our boards and commissions, uh particularly our advisory boards have not had the chance yet to meet. Uh we're launching our staff trainings uh coming up. The goal is to reestablish those meeting as of June first. Uh we have correspondence going out to each of the chairs of our boards and commissions to let them know what's happening and what our timeline is. Uh the reason for the staff trainings is they're gonna have to not only be the staff liaison to these bodies, carrying all the information uh of administration, but also they're gonna be working as moderators of these groups to prevent any of the uh potential issues that we've read other cities have. Thankfully, so far, we have not had any here. Uh would also like to say, keep it up, Berkeley. The Berkeley uh the residents' spotlight has been a blast to watch. We've gotten a ton of great stories. Uh one of the more popular ones was that uh Oxford Towers actually had a bagpiper come and visit the residents there, and so uh we had some great videos of that up on our social media platforms. And last but not least, uh I appreciate Councilmember Gavin bringing up the master plan. Uh by order of the Berkeley City Council, in two days from now, is master plan day in the city, uh so I would like to wa uh wish everybody a happy master plan day, and I have no other items.
Thank you. Mr. Steering?
No report this evening, but I want to offer my best wishes to everybody for uh happy upcoming Memorial Day weekend, and for those who are thinking about heading up north, you're probably aware by now that the governor did order today a reopening of Northern Michigan effective this Friday, including uh bars, restaurants, offices, and stores. Uh so if you're heading that way, enjoy, but please be careful. It's uh still dangerous out there.
Thank you. Um I have, I I think, spoken enough about the budget and and the process early on. Um I'm not going to to repeat everything there, except again, just to thank the directors and the city manager for all of their work in preparing that budget. Um and and while we are talking about the budget, I mentioned earlier that we can certainly expect slashes from state shared revenue, but one source where we may actually be able to receive um funding to help with this may come from the federal level. Uh our representatives, uh U. S. Representative Andy Levin, um has been in contact with with us, with with myself, I'm sure with members of council, but also with our colleagues in the communities uh that he serves, and introduced the Heroes Act, um which which was moved through the House uh on Friday. We'll see what happens in the Senate, but the all of the legislation prior to this had a cutoff for municipalities that have five hundred thousand or fewer residents. There was no potential support coming to any of those municipalities. While this changes that, um and does, what would certainly impact us here, uh should this uh pass and and get approved. Um so I'm certainly looking forward to that, and and I thank um Representative Levin, Congressman Levin, um for his work in in trying to help alleviate some of those concerns. It's been very clear um in any conversations that I have had with states or federal legislators that we're okay right now. We we can pass a budget, but in the future, the expenses or the the projects and the capital and the infrastructure improvements that we're having to push off are going to come back, and we are going to have to address those. And if something doesn't change with Proposal A and how that's structured and headly, or if we don't get some sort of relief from the federal government, we're gonna find ourselves in in a very precarious situation in a number of years with some of those major projects. So hopefully, this is a uh first step into allowing us to to be able to put those projects back in the future and do it in a in a fiscally responsible way while maintaining um the remainder of our budget. So I thank him uh for his leadership uh at the federal level and and his colleagues that were able to to get that um approved and passed the House. I also participated in a listserv with all of the mayors across the state. Um some of those mayors from uh Northern Michigan were quite excited today. Um but one of the questions that that did come up was, you know, for for everybody else, hey, are you guys going to override any of the the governor's orders? Are you gonna follow the governor's orders um moving forward? And and everybody agreed, no, no, we are certainly going to be following the governor's uh orders and recommendations moving forward. We will begin to open up the city of Berkeley as we are able to um and and begin to resume some activities that have been paused for the last better part of the last couple of months. We will do it safely. We will do it responsibly, and we will do that uh in line with what the governor um expects us to do moving forward. With that, it is eight fifty-seven, counselor uh uh tw- council member. Tori, I can't believe that that's seven to nine that I told you earlier. I thought that was a pie in the sky, but you were correct. It was uh the Zoom meeting was only stuff from seven to nine, so if we went longer, no sunset, we were out. We've got two minutes uh to call for an adjournment, so I I guess I better start with that. Uh is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from uh Councilmember Price, somebody up in the top corner. Um no, it wasn't her? Okay. Councilmember Baker. We'll we'll amend that. Councilmember Baker.
He wants to keep meeting all night, I can tell.
Uh with that, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the rule?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
The May eighteenth, two thousand twenty regular meeting of the Thirty-Eighth Council is adjourned. Tori, you're gonna schedule all future meetings. Thank you, and timelines. I appreciate that.